Take your seats. Take your seats. Ready to go? Let's do it. Okay. Good morning. We're at the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 3rd, 2015. We begin with a special order calendar. Continued hearing, item number one, 545-36BC, 2001, 2007, Williams Bridge Road, the Bronx.
Good morning. Eric Palatnik, and apologies, I kept waiting to see the chair and her seat before I settled down, so I apologize.
We are going to see this morning about her. At this point, she's stuck on train, so...
That's the way it is today, and yesterday.
Whenever the transit system gets her there, she will leave.
She needs an RDX.
So, did you hear our comments from yesterday? Or were...
Yes, I think you were okay with everything. We submitted photos depicting that the banners were removed, and...
Well, actually, initially, you didn't submit the photos, and we got the photos yesterday.
We did.
And since we have the photos, I had some comments.
Sure.
Well, mine had to do with the existing chain link fence that you want to keep at the rear of the property.
Right, the white one.
Which is in very poor condition. It's bent, it's dented, and I really think that should be replaced. And I had a question about the curb cuts.
Thanks.
They didn't look like they were two 30-foot curb cuts. Was that brought up previously?
No, I don't believe it was.
Can you check those to make sure that they comply with whatever previous...
Yeah, we'd be happy to.
Did you ever get the community board vote on this case?
I believe they voted in support of it, but we'll double-check the records.
Okay.
Well, I agree with Mr. Montez, but definitely need to...
And your photos also showed a car parked on the sidewalk, which I think was something we brought up previously.
Yes, the white Ford Explorer.
Right.
We'll resubmit photos.
Any last... Is there anyone to speak on this item? So, Ms. Palatnik, how long do you think it'll take you to reapply if you fix the fence? Get us some...
Probably within the next... They're anxious to move ahead because there's some financing issues they'd like to take care of. We'll probably have photos to you in two or three weeks.
So, will you get us photos by December 1st? 10?
Yes. That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Loaning calendar. Decision item, item number two, 2514 BC, 1601 1623 Avenue J, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Mayor J. Altman, the office of Mayor J. Altman.
Good morning. Motion to crack? Do we have to reopen? We will note that we had closed, but let the record go for additional submissions, which we got, and I thought we would add any comment on. Therefore, I will proceed with any motion to crack. Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner de Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, 18514 BC, 14 Wall Street, Manhattan.
Jordan Most from the Office of Sheldon Lombeau. Good morning.
So, motion to crack? Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner de Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number four, 21614 BC, 150nd sedan avenue, Manhattan.
Good morning, Jay Goldstein for the applicant.
Motion to crack? Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner de Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, 21714 BC, 245 West 17th Street, Manhattan. Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner de Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, 22214 BC, 3044 East 63rd Street, Manhattan.
Richard Lobell, Sheldon Lombeau PC for the applicant.
We won't wait for the vice chair to participate.
How about this weather?
How about those Patriots?
Oh, well, yeah.
How about those Seahawks?
Really?
Let's not play baseball.
That's not a good decision.
On the motion to crack? Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner de Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Continued hearing items, item number seven, 350-12 BC, 532nd Street, Brooklyn.
Richard Lobell, Sheldon Lombeau PC for the applicant.
Requested an adjournment?
Yes, Vice Chair, we... As you may remember, this case was one of a proposed community facility building within an M31. The vice chair actually, at the time, had requested that we look into issues of federal preemption. And there's been a rather long briefing process, which we submitted to BSA and then submitted to Department of Buildings. While we did not receive what would be called a final determination from them, their counsel did indicate to us that they would not support this argument. And while we expressly reserve the right to challenge a determination in the form of an appeal, at some point, the applicant here, a nonprofit who is involved in homeless housing, is interested in proceeding according to typical variance findings. So that the adjournment we've requested and the subsequent hearings of this matter would basically submit with regards to the typical 7221 findings. And so, in an effort to do that, we've asked for this adjournment and are looking into the past hearings at BSA on this matter, so we can respond to the last variance requests that were made by the board.
So, how much time do you need to prepare?
I believe we've asked for approximately four weeks, which will allow us time to provide the board with an expanded land use study, as well as additional support for the findings, and then potentially a hearing in March.
So, Ken, are you able to give us the motion by the 3rd of March?
By the...
The 3rd of March?
And may I ask, we're hoping...
It could be earlier spent...
We would like... What we're requesting would be the second hearing date in March, I believe, the March 10th hearing. So, whatever the...
You're on March 1st. Pretty cool for the next one, maybe the 24th.
Huh.
That's why it's the 3rd is available.
Yes. We're under a tight timeframe, but if that's the only possibility, then I don't know if we have any other choice.
So, you'll take the submission on the 3rd of...
Hearing date on...
On the 24th.
Well, I guess to the extent that we can... We might as well take the 10th for a submission.
10th for a submission, and the 24th as you...
Okay. Thank you.
Item number eight, 15513 BC, 1782 East 28th Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Mayor Altman, the office of Frederick A. Beck.
Wanted to adjourn this also. Given the schedule, you had a different submission request, but if you could submit on February 18th, that's about fine.
That was the exact date that we had requested.
Oh, that's what you requested, okay.
That's correct.
During the 3rd.
That's exactly what I requested. Thank you very much.
Item number nine, 9114 BC, 3420 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Mayor J. Altman, the office of Mayor J. Altman.
And you wanted to adjourn this the same schedule?
Actually, we would request to make continued hearing on 2/24 on this case.
2/24, okay, so that's the problem where we don't have the force on the 1/24. So, it would be a submission on the 17th and hearing on the 3rd, March 1st.
18.
18.
Thank you very much.
Item number 10, 11414 BC, 2442 East 14th Street, Brooklyn.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair. Grappling with transit like we've all been grappling with for the past day and a half. And my client is not here yet, and I know that your board wasn't ready to accept the last set of plans we gave you, and he very much wanted to speak. So, I'm asking if we could second call this. Unless you slept overnight and decided you like it, otherwise, in which case, I don't need you.
Second call.
Thank you.
Item number 11, 11814 BC, 1891 Richmond Road, Staten Island. Okay. Item number 12, 12414 BC, 11112 Gilmore Court, Brooklyn.
Richard Lobell, I'm Sheldon Lombeau PC for the applicant. Madam Chair, we had a representative at the executive session. By way of background, the owner here submitted new plans, which reflected a lower FAR. The FAR that we chose was just under 1.48. The reason we use that guide is because the board is previously on this block front, granted a 1.48 to a home. So, we felt in good faith that we were making an effort to more closely comply with board precedent and what would be fitting for the area. So, I don't want to unnecessarily belabor the discussion here. I understand from some of the comments that the board may still feel that the massing is fairly robust for this block.
But maybe most critical is Commissioner de Montanez's observation that it's an AE flood zone.
Yes.
It needs... The building really needs to be redesigned.
Understood.
And if you follow both comments in mind during the design.
Understood. So, obviously, in order to correctly address the flood zone issues, we're going to have to resubmit. What... The only thing I'd ask for is that the owner here remains committed to wanting to move this along as quickly as possible. So, I'd ask for the soon-as-possible submission and hearing date, because we've already had conversations with the architect, who knows what they need to do, and we'd be happy to resubmit in an expedited manner.
So, in a way to expedite submission and the response?
Yes.
Respond?
And the grant?
And the grant, you see. Respond to all of those comments about bulk and rear yard and all of that by having a design that's responsive.
Sure.
So, if there isn't any question, you say, "Wow, that's exactly right."
Understood. With the understanding that if we corrected all of these issues, that potentially we could get a grant on the next hearing date, if we were...
I think there were significant issues just on the...
I was just trying to be in the spirit of the...
I get that, but I would not necessarily be...
Okay, understood. It's gonna... It'll be very... It will be...
It's a lot of work.
Sure, it's gonna be far more acceptable.
So, it is... Very full hearing schedule, right? All the way up? March 3rd is what's available next?
We would...
That might work.
I think that would be great.
Okay. So, March 3rd with a submission on February 17th?
Excellent. To the extent that questions arise with regards to any of the issues that were raised at executive session or here, we'll reach out to staff.
Yes.
Okay. I think we'll do that.
Item number 13, 177...
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Item number 13, 17714 BC, 10:30 o'clock, Michigan Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello, Eric Palatnik, talking quick, lest Ms. Mathias move me along.
Sorry. We had an issue on this because we would address the sound issues and things like so. We're located closest to the other... We're looking for speakers on the side, and we're all stuck in the train. So, for a motion to close? Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner de Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Decision date? Oh, sorry. I think we've got a decision on the 24th. Or a decision on the 24th.
Thank you.
Here he is. There he is. Yes. Okay. Item number 14... Am I calling all the HPD stuff? Yes. Okay. Item number 14, 28514 BC, 2862814 BC, McLaughlin Street, Orlando Street, C. Broad Avenue. Item number 15, 29714 BC, 314A, Topping Street, Staten Island. Item number 16, 30714 BC, 5400 Avenue. And number 17, 30814 BC, 310314 BC, Hiswood Street, Colony Avenue. Instead of just that, I just want to note that 28614 BC was withdrawn, and so... 31014 BC was withdrawn. That was 21, Colony Avenue. And all the rest are adjourned to the next hearing on February 10th. Okay. Want to call Phil's first, and then... On that, you're here. Item number 11, 11814 BC, 1891 Richmond Road, Staten Island.
Thank you very much. That's what I get for being a driver. I did not attend the review session yesterday, but I did speak to the examiner. We submitted a revised set of drawings, and we changed the way we measure height. Previously submitted, we had sloping base plane, which may be used as an option. When we went to a regular base plane and we use existing grade, that helped our case for not penetrating the height of the building through the height plane. So, the building no longer penetrated... It no longer needs variance for height. And at the same time, because we have less than a six-foot height in the basement, we get to deduct the lower level where there's parking from floor area. We did revise the plan to indicate attic storage, which is very little storage for any of the residents within the building. And if you look at the front elevation now, instead of the front topography being relatively flat, even with the sidewalk, it now has a slope to it. And that... The reason for that is how we measure base plane. I hope that answers those questions, and I believe there was another question about providing landscaping on the plan. Since we're in the Special Natural Area District, in accordance with Section 105-022F, I am required to provide a landscaping and revegetation plan to city planning, once I go to city planning with this application, hopefully after it's approved. So, I would ask if it would be noted in the resolution that a landscaping plan is required, and then when we gear up to go to city planning, that's when we provide a detailed landscaping.
And then can you then submit us the landscaping plan? That would be incorporated, and it would be a reference in the resolution, that there's a city planning approval on landscaping, so that it ties together the BSA action and city planning.
I'm not sure...
So, in other words, when you... Once you have an approval for city planning on landscaping, you submit a copy of that approval to BSA?
After I get BSA approval.
After you get BSA approval.
Yes.
And you go to city planning, you submit it to BSA, and the resolution will make reference to a city planning approval. So, that's part of the condition of approval.
Yeah, but I'm just... I have a look on my face, because now the hearing's closed, the resolution is written, ready.
Right. It's just gonna make reference to a city planning approval.
Will be required.
Which is required and is included as part of this approval, whatever it is. So, that it's a reference to the planning action, so that people are reading the resolution to be... Know that there's more to the approval.
That's normal and customary. That's fine.
I had a question yesterday about the building height, and I just don't... Like, I'm looking at BSA 13, which is the front elevation, and you have a line from, I believe, 61.1, which is your new base plane?
Yes.
And it shows the 35-foot maximum permitted building height?
Correct.
And then it just looks like the roof is above that.
To the midpoint of the roof. You're allowed... That height is to the midpoint of the roof, is what it says in the...
I thought that was the maximum.
No. In the zoning resolution, it says, "That height shall be to the midpoint of the roof." I don't have my resolution with me, but...
Yeah, okay, because that's...
Yeah, you know what section they're talking about? Are they...
I don't know off the top of my head. It would be measuring building height under a base plane.
So, you're in an R3X?
X.
In the natural? It's frozen. Okay.
Yeah, but the natural area district doesn't address the height. It's under the underlying district regulation.
Two, three, four, six, seven, forces one, five, two, five, four.
We're still frozen. Sorry.
So, it's a secret CDC, or is the chair a chair's...
No, it's an authorization for modification of topography, removal of trees, and it's possible for relocation of erratic boulders, but I'm not sure.
Good luck with that.
I know. It was previously... The previous city planning approval did have erratic boulders that they approved, but since there was some site work done on the property already, I don't know if that's still applicable.
What are we looking for here? A plan of terraces or...
Height.
Is it a terrace?
No.
No, it'll have diagrams showing the building type, and then where you count from the apex.
It looks like a little house.
And draw the lines, you pull them together, and as long as you're within the line, you should be around 200, because there's a whole sort of series of... Any other comments? I hope you have them. Right. There were two kind of questions. I had asked if you could revise the land sales for the R1-2, and I... It says that it was revised, that there's only one R1-2 comp sale, and the others are R3 sales. So, if you could just add a narrative explaining why there were R3 sales and not enough R1-2 sales, and whether or not that R3 sale has affected in any way on the value, because you're not adjusting for zoning.
I know, and the reason for that is the... Where the zoning district boundary line cuts through the site is really in the area of preservation to the left of the site, so we're not developing it. Where we are developing it is the R3X.
Right.
You need that in a narrative?
Yeah, just write in the narrative that you... That the appraiser feels that R3 and R1-2 undevelopable land is going to sell at approximately the same price, and that just puts that a few to bed. And then you have recaptured that storage space in four units, and so I think that you need to recalculate the sales price of those four units would be additional space.
We are hoping to make that attic accessible to all of the units and have little storage spaces, like you wouldn't normally have in the basement.
Oh, okay. Look for the plan that was accessed by each of those four apartments.
No, there's two... There are two stairs that are accessed from the hallways that go all the way up, so we have two means to regress, and then we're gonna cut up that space so that each unit has like a storage cage.
Well, then, that's considered an identity and should be reflected in all of the sales price. And then those are... Yeah. It's really... Yeah, okay. Are there any speakers on this item? So, sorry? So, I think, given that the issues are very simple and just sort of cleaning things up and we'll check the loaning, just make sure.
That's fine. That would be great. Thank you.
So, for a motion to close? Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner de Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Send a decision date for it also, for the 24th? I'm sorry. Oh, submission. That's the third. So, a submission on February 17th for a hearing, or the decision on the 3rd?
March 3rd.
Yeah. It's just the 24th.
Thank you. And thank you for the second call.
Second call, item number 10, 11414 BC, 2442 East 14th Street, Brooklyn. Sorry, what number is this? This is 11414.
The infamous two-foot rear yard case.
So, we're going to go back to the story of the house.
Yeah, we're in the story of the house.
So, can I just kind of repeat some of my... What I call the issue is this?
Sure. I have a lot of them jotted down, but, yeah, I'd like to hear from you.
Okay. So, the issue is that one of the findings is that you need to look at the character of the neighborhood and determine that the proposal is in character with the neighborhood. And this house, so the existing house, is anomalous... An anomaly in the neighborhood, because it's set so far forward on the lot, and there's only a two-foot front yard. It's different than everybody else that has a large front yard, and then you can understand why you might need to expand a lot in the rear, because you can't expand anywhere in the front. But this proposal is to increase this house by almost two and a half times, which is huge, just to begin with. So, and if you look at the lot coverage on the block, all the other houses on the block, this proposal is well over what they... What these other publicists want. This is a proposed coverage of 60 percent, and the requested floor area increase of 1.4 is a 56 percent increase that will be allowable when you put the add. So, and the issue really has to do with the extension into the rear yard and what it's doing on the neighborhood. And luckily, in terms of the urban analysis, there's a neighbor immediately to the left that has a two-story... That has a two-story brick house that is built with a 27-foot rear yard.
Right.
The neighbor to the other side actually has a 37-foot rear yard, and a portion of that rear is occupied by only a one-story extension. So, their experience of their rear yard is very large. So, the argument that this house needs to go to 25 feet doesn't make sense in terms of the urban character. And in terms of the floor plans, which is why we ask...
Our plans to be dimensioned. We're talking about the removal of two feet.
Right.
We're talking about reduction in the depth of a closet or a bathroom by one foot each, basically. Ditto for the living room kitchen, the dining room kitchen. Take off one foot each, and they both work. And, you know, I design houses. I know how to design a house that has a functioning, very functioning... For instance, the bathroom has a lot of fixtures in it. It could be reduced by a foot if you can. So, the assumption that the rear yard has to be used more than what the neighbor has doesn't make sense. It's not in character with what's going on in the rear. So... So, if you want to get out of here, because there's a lot here, it's just to that...
We, we do want to get out of here, and we're not here to, to bicker with your board. We wouldn't be raising the points if they were something, if, uh, Madam Chair, your, your points are obviously very logical, and you have a lot of experience in the field of architecture, so, and, and the board stands in appeals before you became chair, so your knowledge and, and your point of view is certainly a valid one. Uh, but we, we take issue with it. We have, we have a differing point of view, and Mr. Vasebird is here. The character of the block, the character of the area, the area was, uh, used to be a, uh, a racetrack was in the area, and the houses that are in this particular portion of Brooklyn were built as the houses for the jockeys and the staff for the racetrack. Consequently, what you have around here is some housing stock, such as this home, that's quite old. And, like you said, this house pushes up two feet. You say it's an anomaly on the block. I, I'd say if you look at, at the, the land use diagrams we provided, it's not the only anomaly on the entire block front. If you look around the corner on East Thirteenth Street, I see a couple of houses that have the same condition as this house. If you look on our, on our block, there certainly is no uniformity to the front yards on this block at all. They, it varies like a tic-tac-toe board. Every box is a different color, every, except for the row of houses that start to the left of us, which were obviously built by one developer, uh, because the houses all mimic each other. They're all the same construction type, they're all two-story with the basement, so those houses have a uniformity to it. But absent the houses that, that start to the left of us and include, go down to lot thirty-three or thirty-four, everything on the block is a hodgepodge. So I, I...
The other idea for me is that this house is really far forward of all of the other houses, so it doesn't offer a neighborhood for issues of front yard like some of the other houses do, all the other houses do.
No, all the other houses don't. They don't. The houses, one, two, three over to our right, none of them have combined front yards. The three houses to our right don't have combined front yards at all. Uh, the house...
Complying, complying, oh, complying.
Compliant.
I didn't say complying, I said front.
Yeah, but they don't have compliant front yards.
No, you're saying complying, I'm saying front.
Front, yes, well, two feet's a front yard. It's not as much as what's required. All I'm trying to say is it's...
That's why you're asking for a front yard.
Listen, we're getting into this whole esoteric discussion. The reason Mr. Vasebird is here is because he needs the, the house is not one of these big houses.
You're talking about two feet to align...
In a small house.
To align with the neighbor, so it's because you are already going to be overwhelmed with this house, the neighbor that has thirty-seven foot rear yard.
I...
And the whole idea about this rear yard thing was, so the original concept of allowing extensions into the rear yard was to allow for kind of reasonable amounts of enlarges so that people could make reasonable adjustments.
This is quite, this is quite reasonable.
This is a, a multi-level, it's not a one-story, it's a totally different discussion. This was a one-story extension, it's not.
But how do we achieve, the, the special permit specifically has the language in it, says you can go down to twenty. Here, I'm coming up with somebody that's a twenty-five.
They say that now, but the original concept, and I've read this before here, and the original concept as, as conceived by, uh, city planning under Joe Rhodes was to allow basically reasonable extensions into the rear, and that of those houses that Joe Rhodes looked at were considered by Joe Rhodes, who drafted it, to be out of character with the neighborhood, and said so. So, so these gargantuan additions that are resulting from this was not the original type of special permit. And again, if I look at the designer house, we're not saying you have to do away with the bathroom, do away with the bedroom, we're saying you're reducing it by a tw- two feet from two different functional spaces. So, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense that you impose on the neighbors in such an extreme way.
But nobody's opposed to it. Nobody's upset by it at all. They've, everybody's been notified, everybody's been sent certified letters, he's spoken to the neighbors. The board is the only one that's raising the issue, and the reason it's, it's of so much concern and why we're here talking about it, Mr. Vasebird took it in the morning after work, i- is not because he's not building one of these gargantuan houses. This is not a gargantuan house. This is a very modest house that's existing, and the portion that we're enlarging is just the rear portion. We can't, going to your point earlier, take it out of the kitchen or take it out of somewhere else. We're not moving from that existing rear line that where the building is at the rear right now. We're not, we can't touch and push into that. That's all existing right now, and it's not so easy to push into that and change rooms. So the room sizes that have to change are, and what we're really here talking about, the reason we're here, are the bedroom sizes in the bed.
Yeah, okay, we're talking about removing the one foot from the master bedroom or the other bedroom, both of which, once mentioned, are very reasonable sized bedrooms.
They're not, though. How could they, realistically, a thirteen, in a, in a, in a home, a thirteen-foot-long bedroom is, is big? That's...
Excuse me, ask me about my bedroom.
I, I, I won't ask you about your bedroom, but I'll ask you what borough you live in, and if you live in an apartment or if you live in a single-family house. And that's where the distinction is, and that's, that's, and I, I'm not trying to hang you up by your own platoon, but by the same token...
No, you're not, because I'm not going to be persuaded.
I know, I see you're not being persuaded, but, but that's the difference.
But I'm looking at the other bedrooms, the other bedrooms are workable bedrooms. How come they're working?
The other bedrooms are fifteen feet and sixteen feet.
So we're talking about the existing bedrooms.
You, you're talking about the existing bedrooms right now, or you're talking about the proposed?
You're talking about the two-foot bedrooms, one sixteen-foot ones.
Correct.
Or if you count the closets, the rest of the bedrooms, probably sixteen.
Right, so to take the, the space off of the, a master bedroom and bring it down in size by another foot, you're, you're not at an excessive size for a bedroom already. The, the thirteen-foot rooms are just bare minimums.
I don't see the size as very excessive in saying that you have a workable solution here.
We do, we do.
Totally workable, that the house is a large, a very large apartment, but if you look at this house compared to its neighbors' towers, it's, it's just a massive thing. It's a really, really long building. It's a seventy-two foot long building. I mean, yeah, seventy-two foot long building.
All right, I've tried, and I see that, you know, we'll, we'll obviously accept whatever the board is willing to allot us, but, uh, we do, I do strangely disagree. I don't, I don't think that the two feet, uh, is such a big deal for the City of New York to request to a property owner that's, that's, doesn't have...
It's not the City of New York's request to a property owner. The finding is urban character and relationship...
But nobody's complaining. Everybody's happy. Usually, I could have buzz loads of people...
Because the planning and urban character are unrelated to each other. You look at the character, it's like a science, it's an analysis, what's there in the backyard? That's why we have to...
Yeah, but this block's a disaster in the backyard. I mean, there's no kind of character to this, this, the only thing, if you look at it from an aerial, from above, is you could say it's a mess, the, the inner rear yards of all these properties. You have houses sticking out at all different angles, you have rear yard structure, we gave you five of them that are legal, you have a host of others that are illegal that I'm not relying on.
They're all one-story, again, if you want to do this addition of one stories...
It's the second story that's causing the issue.
Second story that overwhelms neighbors. So if we were doing completely different designs, which I wish everybody would think about, where, you know, you extend whatever you're, to your twenty feet on the first floor, then you pull back to thirty feet on the second floor...
I understand that's what you want, but the problem that we're hearing from every single architect and client that we speak to is it's not what they need for their families, and their responses to us, we'd rather sell the house and go to Jersey than do this. And that's the response we're getting.
It's not gonna make...
Not in this case, but in a lot of them, it's called...
But you really want to go to Jersey.
Well, nobody really wants to go to Jersey that bad, sorry, Jersey. Good hold. Mr. Vasebird is here, he would like to talk, and thank you for entertaining the conversation.
Say your name for the record.
Forrest Vasebird, in the honor of, uh, two four four two, East Fourteenth Street. Good morning, everyone, and, um, thank you for, uh, letting me speak. I've been here, um, several times, as you probably know, um, since the beginning of this, uh, discussion, and, um, it's been quite interesting to learn more about what it takes to, uh, to get approval to extend and enlarge your house that, um, you originally wanted to actually be even bigger, but unfortunately, when we bought a house, and again, I apologize if I'm going a bit too much into, uh, the history of, uh, how my family, uh, got into this, but I think it's important for the, uh, for to, uh, to hear that because when we bought the house, uh, our expectations were that we were gonna have, um, the recreational space in the basement, and, uh, we went into buying this house without knowing, because we're not professionals in this field, that we're gonna have to effectively get rid of the basement because of the new, um, new zoning rules that require four areas that have been impacted by Sandy, because of the new flood maps to effectively eliminate the basement, which is six hundred square feet of usable space that we now have to get rid of. So, all our neighbors have existing basements, and, uh, the house on the left and the house on the right, I believe, has one, and, uh, effectively, um, you know, our workaround was, well, let's try to maximize the extension that we can to allow our kids to have, you know, some more room to play. We've got three, three little kids, thirteen, nine, and two and a half, two and a half is been the most energetic and, uh, hard to follow, but, um, either way, that was our solution to, to the, uh, problem where we burned after buying the house a year, a year plus ago, that we would, um, effectively lose that space, and we, we thought, well, yeah, we're losing the space, but maybe we could, uh, maximize the, uh, the extension so that we could provide, um, you know, more space for our kids to, uh, basically, uh, to have space to, uh, to run, and, and have enough space for them to study, et cetera. So, um, that's when we met with, um, our architect and Mr. Palatnik, who suggested we go through this process. Um, so just going through this process, and again, I've heard a lot of good, uh, arguments and suggestions from the beginning where we pointed out that, you know, our garage wasn't compliant, and we certainly, um, took, uh, note, note, notice of that and, uh, made changes as, as, as you suggested, and we're totally fine with, with, uh, following all the rules and, uh, and regulations. Uh, but here, we are in the subjective territory, I think, where, um, I think, based on the rules, we could have a twenty-yard, um, twenty-foot backyard. Um, we are not asking for the twenty, uh, we're asking for twenty-five. Neighbors on the left already at twenty-seven, and, you know, having a two-foot, uh, greater backyard than they have, you know, actually does matter to my family because it does eliminate space that we would otherwise use for, you know, closet space or, or having a bigger bedroom for one of our children or maybe more than one of our children, um, et cetera. So not having, like I said before, six hundred square foot of recreational space in basement is, is making a big difference.
Spoken extent...
Don't you have, sorry, don't you have an attic that is seventy feet long, seventy-two feet long?
Attic has no... We have no...
It only has an access...
It's gonna be a pull-down stairs, uh, we're not gonna really use it except for maybe some, some...
But it has to come to a, to a, but why is it not an accessible...
It's not gonna be... It's just a... It's, it's gonna be for equipment, so you have to also understand one thing is that after Sandy, we now have to raise all of our, um, uh, equipment up to one of the, um, either one, one of the closets on the second floor or most likely into the attic, so attic is not gonna be usable for any...
Like, but the attic is very, very large, it is such a huge attic, but, but why is it not an accessible attic?
Well, it is gonna be accessible via pull-down stairs.
Now, but I mean, a usable attic...
Right? It, it's just not gonna be, it wasn't projected to be, to be usable.
It's large. It's large.
Hi, Eric Palatnik. Uh, the way the attic is designed is a bowling alley, uh, and I live in a house that has this exact same conditions, which is why I'm embarking upon a substantial renovation to eliminate that. Uh, it's only the center portion of my attic level that one can stand up with here about six foot eight inches wide. Uh, the rest of the attic has sloping ceilings, uh, so it's good so long as the children don't grow above five feet. Uh, once the children get up to the, the five-foot mark, uh, it, it's really rendered useless, as is the attic that I have in my home right now. Uh, it may look like a lot, um, six foot eight inches, uh, width of a, of a five to eight-foot ceiling height, but it's really not that much space, and once you start using it as a true room, uh, you'd be restricted to a very narrow runway in which you can really move around in. In addition, uh, they are utilizing, because the home is designed in such a manner as the, as being up against the homes on the left and the right, and because it's been designed that way since the get-go, and because of the, the width of the lot being just twenty-five feet wide, uh, consequently, they're using skylights at the attic level to ventilate for light and air to below, uh, so that, those areas, you can see that at the, on the attic plan, are necessary to be open to capture light.
I'm sorry, I'm not getting this. So you tell your architect, we don't have use of a cellar, um, so we really need to compensate for not having a cellar, so the architect decides the attic can be used, uh, other than a floor foot.
It's, it's not that...
It's a large structure.
It's not that the architect has designed an attic that you can't, that you cannot use.
The, the, the other consideration is that it's gonna be progressively more expensive to, to, uh, equip the attic such that it could be used for recreational, uh, this is not what we're, uh, that's why we're designing it with the sun.
It's better like, after, capturing your own argument that you need more space, going to family, the kids need a place to play. I'm also curious about that, is play outside.
No, 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 no.
A lot of the...
No, no, no. The kids not, especially not...
Do you all like to go outside? I don't get that.
My kids are the same age. They haven't been outside since December fifth, except for the snowstorm, is probably. So you have five or six months of time during a year when the weather doesn't allow it. Uh, but assum- assuming it's all nice and good to think the children are gonna go to play outside, but the children do reside within the home, and they utilize every aspect of a home. That's what we're designing it for. We're not, if it was for him, he'd be in an apartment, like, we don't want to be in an apartment in the city. We, we don't want to be in suburbia in a house. We'd rather be in an apartment, but the kids drive the ship when it comes to that.
So you're asking for the, a compensation to impose more on rear yard than is typical of, if a very big, uh, neighbor, um, uh, and, and, and making a decision that it's very hard to maintain, not use the attic, which everybody else is using for bedrooms, storage, all that stuff, your attic is actually decorative, other than having a...
It's, it's not that...
Up there, well, you have the hot water heater, you know, you have a little bit of stuff up there. They take up a...
So am I hearing that the board would be amenable if we increase the floor area of the building and we increase the height of the building, that the, the board would be amenable to that? Because if the board would be amenable to that, then...
It is, uh, I would look at the wall, and I have to say, for a lot of this, we think a lot of money to, to, uh, to, uh, so why do you want to consider, I, I understand, I have to, I have to, you know, above, that, you know, like, why do you consider, you have more, 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 uh, space in the attic, to, to, uh, to, to, uh, to, uh, to allow, uh, to, to, uh, to, uh, only because that is expensive, that's, you know, why it's...
So the board, you're raising good points, so, and, and I wasn't aware the board would be amenable to this. So the height, we're below the permitted height right now, we do have room with the height to move up.
You know, you actually don't need to decrease the pitch height because it's a compound floor.
Right, well...
And that would give you, uh, here, is, like, those areas where you compound, I've put a stairwell, I've put a stairway on the...
Well, that's the thing, if we do, what we're trying to comp, obviously, if we go up with this...
They already have a stairwell.
No, we don't have a stairwell leading up to the attic.
They have a stairwell that you can...
We can continue downstairs, the attic, we can continue the stair up to the next level.
Yeah, I mean, there's already area devoted, it's just that it doesn't, that, so you've already got that area, it doesn't affect the section for it all.
So if we added bedrooms upstairs and we increased the floor area to accommodate them because we're gonna be increasing a portion of the space that's between five and eight feet, trying to achieve at least an eight-foot ceiling height, uh, probably along the right side of the, uh, along the side of the home that doesn't have the skylights, uh, would the board be open to that discussion, I guess, is the question.
Well, if you, if you, if actually, if you're on the side of the side, you have to, to, uh, the side of the front, perhaps you actually, then, uh...
Right, but the bedroom, the roof below, what we're trying to service?
You get the mustache, uh, or...
At the second floor?
Yeah. So, um, I, I, this is how, uh, I, I said, it's like, um, the, the, uh, 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 uh,
so, um, we, we certainly will, um, consider this, um, suggestion, uh, for being able to, um, to providing for that extra space in the attic, and certainly going to, um, be more onerous on us to, uh, to equip the attic with what, what's required for it onerous on us to, to equip the attic with what, what's required for it to be a livable space. Um, but this is the only sort of option that we have.
So you, you, you have a much more, have a much more usable space that you're already paying for, it's not more onerous, like, you're getting more usable area out of something that's effectively built and you're already able to finish it out, which might be for energy reasons, you're not going to finish out that without any, any thought over.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it. Um, so, again, uh-
It's not about increasing the height, it's about working with the, the, to, to create a smaller, 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 smaller.
Of course, so we will, Eric Palatnik, we will be coming back. If, if we go that route, we will be coming back with an increase in floor area. Of course, the stairway will add floor area and then the space will be increasing to a five to eight foot ceiling height and dormer areas will increase.
So you have floor area, that's not all, that's not all set. So you have to make sure you make the best of your mechanical reductions in a, in a blood zone and things like that, which I'm not sure.
Okay.
And then there may be some open areas in the stairway.
All right, well, we've, we've, we've heard the board's concerns and I see that the board is, is, the chair specifically is very intent on the rear yard not moving. So we'll work around that and let us see if we could work something that could still serve their needs and that's what the whole purpose is of this, is to not to, for them to have a trophy home, but rather for them to have a home that suits their needs. So that's why he's here today. Thank you for entertaining the conversation. Well, some of the homes are, you, you drive through some of the neighborhoods and you look at some of the homes and I'm sure you've seen them, the homes are spectacular homes. Uh, this is a lovely home, but I, I don't mean it's called a spectacular home.
That means long is not small, Alex. Well, except that over the wall, that over 40 feet is unusable in the attic. In the attic, right, well, that doesn't-
Which counts as total area.
Yeah, right, that's way too big for it.
All right, well, we'll take, we'll take a look at them.
It's actually 485 square feet.
Yeah.
Oh, I've lived in the same apartments, so I know.
Okay, so your architect has to move.
Yes, and he could move quickly. Uh, we could submit in two weeks or whatever, that's the more schedule I have.
I'd rather be, be careful to, for, because you can tell everything besides your house.
No, he'll opt on this right away.
Anyway, the next available hearing is March 3rd, so we will see if we can move it up faster.
Okay.
So a submission on, on, on the 17th.
Thank you, thank you. That's, that's great. Thank you, and we'll take your ideas back to him. Thank you very much.
This concludes the morning session, we'll resume at 1 o'clock for the cases.